Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
The Capitol Budget Committee Report, open. And we are available. Our recommendation is that last year, we presented a plan for $149,000. This year, because of the increase, we put in an increase to 175, mainly because of the Walker Bridge. So, the total funds that we are recommending this year are the Highway and Road Rail Structures Program, total of $25,609. The Fire Truck Program, 15, which would be go to the fire department for their fire truck fund. The Highway Equipment Program, $75,000. The Guard Rails Program, for $4,000. Town Hall refurbishment is nothing this year, because we have $11,000, which had been there for two years, and our no projects that were down by forests this year. The Computer Upgrade Program is $4,000. Bridge Maintenance Program, $5,000. And the Bridge Construction Program, which began the Walker Bridge, $46,391. And in total of six years, if we put in $46,391, we'll have enough to fund the $400,000 that's anticipated related to that project. It's open for public comment. Susan, you better ask some questions.
Is there a message in that?
You're the public.
I do have a question, actually. The Town Hall refurbishment, I believe, stands out as fire hall. The Town Hall refurbishment, the work has been done, has been funded by grants, and therefore no capital?
There was $100,000, I believe, Kim, that was allocated for that project. I think it's been spent, pretty much.
I think we still have $23,000 maybe left?
That was a special article, and was not part of the capital budget.
Okay.
Prior to that, I believe, the Capital Budget Committee had allocated some money, of which there's $11,239 left right now on the books. So, that's available to do more work at the Town Hall, but right now, nobody has given us a project, or we don't know what sort of use for it.
So, that $11,000 can carry over to the next fiscal year?
Yes, all of this can carry over. In fact, what we anticipate having available as of 6:30, 2021, would be a total in our programs for everything of $464,704, of which the biggest piece is $295,232 in the Highway Equipment Program. And that would be enough to fund the next two trucks, actually, which would be 2021 and '23.
And that's the regular payment that's included in?
That's included in that, you know, and it would be the second payment, we've paid one, and there's another one scheduled to go for $22,198. And then, we're proposing $75,000 for this 2021 year, which would get us to $295,000 at the end of that period.
Kathy, I have a question, but Stan's not here. Did you guys meet yet, and are you going to come and give us a recommendation on the Town Hall?
We're waiting for James's on some heat pumps, estimates. We're looking at some of that stuff.
Okay, so you're all working on?
Stan said no one's saying back to him at all. James or Dakota haven't answered at all, he's called a couple times. But we have that one quote you guys got. Did you not?
I didn't get it. Is it in my box?
I didn't get it.
It's in everybody's box. There's a lot of stuff in your box.
Yeah, there's a quote from Brent Coleman, on six different scenarios for the heat pumps.
Is that good from Monday, Coleman?
Springfield.
Is that with him?
He actually does all the heat pumps for the Wyndham Foundation, and for Liz Van Kousi, and furthermore, and there's rubates built into it, too.
So, this would be like a normal hearing. This is only the discussion phase, the question and answer phase.
Is there any other questions?
No actions taken now.
We're done.
Would anybody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Would somebody like to second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. The hearing is closed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Chris? Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, let's, we have a few minutes to approve today. The first one would be Monday, December 2nd, the regular Select Board meeting here at Town Hall.
Bill?
I just done these to you this afternoon, so, other than the 2nd, if you want, okay. Just do the 2nd.
Yeah, I mean, the 2nd. So, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of December 2nd? Stan's not here, so Alan, you might have to take his place.
She wasn't here on the same.
Oh, that's right, you're not here, sorry.
We still have enough.
Huh?
We still have enough to.
Oh, I know. Do we have any additions, corrections? If they're not, then it's a motion to approve the minutes of December 2nd?
So, who?
2nd?
Kathy, it's up to you or nobody?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, there's three ayes and one abstention. All right, I'll take care of that. Okay, the next thing is the warrants. They were presented to the board and were signed, so that's done. So, now, we have to deal with the capital budget as presented by the Capital Budget Committee to the board. Do we have any changes, or do we want to add or subtract any of the? There was a discussion at this budget meeting of adding the line for the hydrants, and the question is, do you want to do it this year, or do you want to do it the following year? And that's, that did come up during that discussion, so I bring it to the floor, so that, you know, we can discuss it if you feel is necessary.
Make the motion, we adopt the capital budget as presented by the Capital Budget Committee.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion of the capital budget as presented to the board?
I would ask that next year, discussion takes place about the five hydrants in the future.
Okay, Capital Budget Committee make a note of that, so we can put that for there. Bill?
Can I add to that, that there be some sort of information gathering before you have that discussion, because that was part of the discussion. And you got to know something before you can decide what tactics you're going to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll just have a meeting, you know, of a couple of people, and discuss what we should do, which I believe was test the pond, and a couple of other things, and then we can make a recommendation.
Is that the capital budget, Pauline, doing that?
I'll organize it.
Okay. Any other discussion on the capital budget? If not, all in favor of the motion to adopt the capital budget as presented, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, Danny's not here, I'm assuming he's rested enough for the storm, so Bill, do you want to take in Danny's place?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, first we got some agenda, everything that I wanted to talk about, and that is, we recalled a couple, a month or so, eight weeks ago now, but from VTRAN saying they had $110,000, didn't know what to do with it. So, if we wanted to apply for it, we could. The effect is, it moves us down on the list, but we're already pretty far down on the list, so it isn't going to be that big a deal. We had several culverts that we had been identified, and are on our master mitigation list, they're on the capital budget list, it's on the Town Highways list, it's all about the same. And one of those, about number six, or seven, or eight on the list, is Hinckley Brook. Those above it, we'd much rather do, but the one right here, the Bell Road and Fisher Road, we can't do, because it's got a historical stone culvert inside, half of it is a historical stone culvert. And VTRAN's historical division doesn't want us to replace it without, I don't know what. I don't know what they want, but they wouldn't let us get it, just simply replace it. It is called to be replaced by the hydraulics and hydrology study with a box culvert. And it really needs to be replaced, because that road's going to go out. So, but we just have to wait till it goes out, and maybe takes the historic culvert. It never takes the historic culvert, we'll never rebuild it, probably. The one down below that, we were going to, we were thinking about doing, is just about halfway between Record Road and the schoolhouse, there's another big culvert, but it was too expensive to do, based on the 2011 estimate we had. It was already $175,000. The one we decided to do is on Hinckley Brook, it's culvert number 11, it's about three-tenths of a mile up from my house, where there is the last culvert we did. It made no sense to go past that culvert to another culvert, because you'd have a big culvert, small culvert, big culvert. So, we picked the number 11, and number 11 was $155,000, which the person estimating that said he would stick with, until I told him that A&R changed their, what they required for it, and they now need a 7 by 12, and not a 6 by 12, because you've got to vary it two feet instead of one foot for the fish, and therefore, it costs about $20,000 more. Getting back to the Fisher Hill culvert that was 175,000, that is probably $200,000 now, so we were still smart not to do that one, when we couldn't get the money. And so, what I did is, I asked Better Roads if we could ask for a second supplemental grant from them, to cover the difference between the $110,000 and the $175,000 it's going to cost to do. And they said yes, so I have, I have received the VTRAN, so we have the $110,000 grant, but I'm hoping we will get not a $38,000, but a $48,000 grant from Better Roads, which is, so our share in that culvert would be $10,000 for the VTRAN's grant, $12,000 for this, so we pay $22,000 for $175,000. Well, $175,000 culvert, that's basic. I just wanted to let you know that that was going on, and hopefully, by doing that, we won't impact the capital budget as much as we thought we would. We thought we would be getting like $40,000 or $50,000. I think that's the number, right, Artie?
We were going to pay $46,000 and $110,000 originally?
Yes, so maybe we were down to half of that from capital budget, which would be really good. But that depends on Better Roads getting, getting that grant from Better Roads. We also have, so that's the first bullet point. I didn't know about the Better Roads grant at the time I did this agenda. The others are grants that we've asked for, to continue the hydraulically connected, stone lining the dishes, and those four grants have been put into, in for, and I don't know if coming in and get, if any of them. It might all, might just be better to get the one grant for the Hinckley Brook culvert at $48,000 than to get these grants, so, or, we might get them all, we just don't know. Other than that, that's all I have on highway, and I don't have anything for Danny. Danny, they're all sick up on Taylor Hill, they got the Taylor Hill flu, I guess, and so he isn't here tonight. But I know they're doing just winter operations with sanding and salting as necessary. And that's all I have.
Alan? I'd like to ask Bill to craft a letter to Agency of Transportation, explaining the historic culvert, and the significance of it, with our town shed upstream from there, and ask them, what is the procedure? Do we have to wait until it washes out, or what, what would be the procedure to get that replaced in a scheduled event? And having worked for the state, I know sometimes, one hand doesn't wash the other, so they have a historic branch, and they have an archeological branch, and I understand, but still, see what you can find out. Okay?
Anything else on the highway? Okay, moving right along, Jack Brier has not arrived.
He will be delayed, he had another meeting. Instead of being early to go to that meeting, he's going to be late, if he makes it at all. He said 6:30, or so.
Okay, so let's move on to, we'll leave that open, and move on to the.
Southeast Vermont.
Vermont.
Southeast Vermont is supposed to be here, and so, we can delay that, and we can move right on to number nine for Kim.
Okay, this is a request for the Town Appropriations, the Vermont Rural Fire Protection I guess Rich was supposed to be here, so.
Oh, that's the one you're doing?
Well, that's the next one, isn't it?
Yeah, that's number nine. We're not taking it.
Okay, number.
Oh, no, did I, no.
Yeah, you're right, you are right. They are. They really want us to do it, because they do use it all the time, they get their dry hydrants grants from there, and so they would really like you to do it. It would have to be, as I asked him, it has to be a separate article, it would be for the, I think you're asking the $100, right? It's on the back.
I don't have it back.
Yeah, basically, question that you include $100 in your article for the RFP. And I can, we, we will, Kim and I will write the article for them, but we just need approval for that article, if you so desire.
Do we have a motion? Somebody want to make a motion to grant the $100 to the Vermont Rural Fire Protection?
No, no, no. To put an article?
Oh, no, for the Vermont Rural Fire Protection Task Force? Yes? Got a question, though?
Yeah, discussion.
Yeah, no, but we have to have the motion for it, I understand.
I'll make the motion that we put forward an article requesting a $100 appropriation for our Rural Fire Protection Task Force.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Alan?
I'm familiar with this program, it's been around a long time. Troy Dair, the guy that runs it, I've had him at my fire wardens meetings many times, so I'm real well-versed in the program. I'm not opposed to the program, but my concern is, you send $100 in the hopes that you get a grant back. Like all money you send to the state, you never get back as much as you sent in, as a rule. I'm wondering if it makes more sense for us, just to set aside $100 a year, or $200 a year, in an account that's for dry hydrants, and we know, and we control it, and we know that when there's enough money to do a project, they can go put a dry hydrant in, as opposed to sending money into the kitty, and hope that you get some money back.
Bill?
No, I don't think that's the plan at all.
That's not the plan. I know that's not the plan.
Is this money for Grafton residents? I mean, how does it benefit Grafton residents? This is humanitarians that usually support, like, crafting cares, visiting nurses.
They're supporting a group that in the past, has given us money for one, since I have been here, for three fire ponds, three fire ponds. They've given us money to do it, that's like $3,000 to $4,000 apiece. We put them in, but they're the ones that have done it, so I, it's like supporting, I don't know, American Red Cross, or the Cancer Society, and then you get cancer, and you go to them for help. They're around because you supported them, that's how I see it, but.
Yeah, but the town doesn't donate to the Cancer Society type of thing?
No, but don't, but the Cancer Society doesn't build fire ponds.
Well, did I read somewhere that they want to add a dry hydrant to the new pond on Stagecoach Road, or did I dream that?
You may have.
I thought that's what.
It would have made sense to put the dry hydrant in when they constructed the pond.
That's very true.
That would have been much more cost-effective.
But maybe the guy didn't want to spend the money.
Well, I don't think, I don't know, nobody approached him.
I don't think money would have been an issue there.
I mean, I have two ponds, and I have, I had two dry hydrants, but I put them in myself.
Correct.
When that pond was built.
Well, of course, in that particular case, because they didn't have to come get a permit from the town, the fire department didn't know.
Yeah.
You wanted to come back.
No, no, we're talking about the $100 to the, so would you?
Perfect time to work, no, not the truck.
Actually, would you do that, so that we understand fully?
Yeah.
So, you've read the letter, so you know what that's about. But my, my thought is, and I've worked with Troy Dair, and I'm aware of the program, but I just raised the question, is if we were to put $100 or $200 a year into a dry hydrant fund?
Yep.
That we control in town, we know, and we have enough money.
Yep.
You can spend it. If we send $100 off to this program, which is a good program?
Yep.
Then you're at their mercy, or luck of the draw?
Yep.
That you get, that sometime you get the money back.
Yep.
And so, I just wonder, in most state things, you send money, and you don't get it all back, so.
We, is Eric here by chance? No. I've had no firsthand experience with this, since I've been chief, we have not applied for a grant for this, but in recent memory, every grant, every dry hydrant we have put in, since I've been in town, 15 years, it has gone through this program without any ifs, ands, or buts. It's about $4,500 bucks, and with Eric doing the design, and donation of manpower and everything else, we've been installing these for no tax pay of money. This is something new, I think this is the third year for this. Before, they never asked for a voluntary $100. So, will they, if you don't send it, will they refuse you? I don't really know.
Well, but, 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 the last fire wardens, that, actually, about the last five fire wardens meetings, Troy Dair has made the announcement, this is probably the last year of this program.
Oh, I hadn't heard that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And he comes back the next year, and this is probably.
I didn't, I was not aware of that.
And so, now, for them to ask for donations, to me, is indication of what's happening, you know?
Well, just remember, the motion is not to grant the $100, it's to put it on dry hydrant warrant.
I understand that.
And, so if we put it on, then it's up to the town to vote it in March, and if they want to put the $100, they put it in, if they don't, they don't, but I don't see any harm in putting it on, we're not actually spending the money, the town's going to spend, the residents are going to spend the money, or authorize the town to spend the money.
Yeah, I mean, you know what, I'm glad you mentioned that, I honestly did not hear that.
Yeah, it would be, it would be very nice, though, to find out from this organization, if this program is going to be the last one, because if it is, then you wouldn't want to approve it at a town meeting.
Well, the other part, if you may or may not know, is Troy Dair doesn't even live in Vermont anymore, he moved to Maine.
Okay, sorry.
Another communication.
This is sounding better and better.
The address is in Maine.
I know, because that's where he moved to.
But do you realize the ISO rating for all the people who live near fire ponds, how much they saved in insurance? And you say it doesn't help the town? I'm not opposed to dry hydrants, don't get, you're getting me wrong. I'm not opposed to putting in dry hydrants, I'm just wondering if it's the best way to fund this in the future, with the idea of what's going on.
What we can do, if this makes sense, put it on the town warrant, then, maybe we'll have more information by then, and I'll be at a town meeting, and I can present it at that point, and say, hey, I mean, I'm hearing that this thing is all done, and then at that point, it shouldn't be voted on, or in.
If you want, I'll keep that mouth shut.
I'm just, no, that's not the point.
I'm just telling you what I know.
Yep, and you know, and I think it probably does make sense, at some point in the near future, to try to fund the dry hydrant system, you know, or finally, you know. That's the capital budget, right? Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah. I mean, we've been doing it all on the cheap, but we don't, according to last time, we got, I'm not going to get off track here, but we weren't in full credit for our ISO rating, because we did do something, we go on the cheap, and it happened to be officially engineered. Done with me?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? So, all in favor of the motion to, thank you, all in favor for the motion to put this on as an article in the warrant? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, so, Bill and, and Kim, you can decide how you want to craft this thing. Okay, you're the next, you're the next, Kim, the delinquent tax collector article.
Pretty much, everybody got the letter in there, and it's from Carl, and you had a chance to read it. And because Jan is going to retire this year, she is up for reelection, a three-year term, and what we're running into in this situation is that she is up for three-year term, which means she is an elected official, it's an elected official through Australian ballot, it's in place now, and the only time it can be taken out of place, taken away, is if the town votes on it on the floor. So, we've got a ballot that needs to be presented, because it is an elected official, at the same time as, assuming that it's going to be voted out position. Can't really work that way by law, unless we hold a special town meeting, take it away from an elected position, and become appointed, and then move forward. Or, if you want to have a special town meeting from now till town meeting, then we would go accordingly, have the elected official, have an elected position again, three-year term, have it become appointed after the three-year term, just like it says, establish, establish a stipend, meaning the town, make sure that we state that the town is keeping the 8%, even with this three-year elected term, so whoever runs delinquent tax would still turn the 8% over to the town, and not keep it historically like they used to. And then turn it into a one-year appointment after the three-year term is up. So, essentially, if all goes well, I would run as treasurer for the delinquent tax collector for three-year term, and then it would state that it would, it would be as compensation, and the 8% goes to the town. After the three-year term is up, that's it, it's done. And that's only if these articles were to pass on the floor at town meeting. Does that make sense to you, the steps you have to go through? And then in three years, that position will no longer exist, other than an appointed position through the select board.
Right, providing the article is approved at the town.
On the floor, providing these three articles get approved on the floor.
So, are you asking us to approve this?
I'm just letting you know that, well, this would have to be articles added to the warrant.
Right, so you're asking for an approval to add the article to the warrant, is that's what I understand, correct? I think, I think it's, I think it's better for the town, the town keeps the 8%. I think it's, I think it's better for the town, the town keeps the eight percent. And then we have, bank accounts are all controlled. They don't have something that's outside control that we don't know. Not that anybody is doing anything wrong, but it's under the guidance of the town.
If it does become an appointed position, it does not necessarily have to be someone who actually lives in the town. It's kind of like the library trustees. It doesn't have to be a resident, because it's an appointed position by the board.
Correct.
So that's, typically, I mean, you can, I'd say probably seventy-five percent is more town treasurers are the delinquent tax collectors. Is that correct?
So are you asking permission?
We need a motion to put it on the warrant.
So it would look like three new articles is what it's going to look like. Unless you have discussion and you want to hold a special town meeting before the town meeting.
We can't, we couldn't do, we don't, it's too late now to piggyback that on the town plan vote, right?
Because the town plan and the special town meeting is actually just in Australia, so we don't have to like formally...
Right, so there's no information, that's right.
And this would have to be a vote.
Right, right, right. I make a motion that we authorize Kim to craft the appropriate articles for the town warrant to comply with this letter.
Second?
Second.
Does the board have any further discussion? Anybody? If not, let's call a question. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Kathy, are you voting, or are you...
I said aye.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry to hear that. Okay.
I just want to add too, we went to a seminar, Michelle and I, for delinquent tax collectors happening in Hamburg. And we really don't have a delinquent tax policy. So that is something that needs to kind of be drafted, so we need to get it a little more, get very formal.
Is that something you, is that something the select board's responsibility, Kim, or is that something you do?
Pretty much if people can work with it.
I mean, it's something that...
We can try to craft one. I'll see what I can come up with. But we really should have some sort of a policy.
When you were at the meeting, did they give you any...
Examples, yeah. We've got templates. Yeah, we've got some templates, but like I said, they're really involved, more than what we have. I think we have half a page, and it doesn't say much of anything.
Okay. Okay, so now we're at public comment. Do we have any public comment? Yes, Bill.
Do you want anything on the CIC building?
Why not? Well, we have time. There's nobody here, so...
Okay, I was hoping Rich would stay, but on Saturday, we got a call, and Rich got a call, going to the CIC building. One of the tenants was concerned about...
Friday.
On Friday, on Friday it was. One of the tenants was concerned about a possible hazardous material thing about to happen because of the tenant next door. If you remember a long time ago, when we were doing the solar, at the beginning of the solar field stuff, I wanted to make sure that though you guys didn't oppose the solar, and you thought it was a really good site, and I agree with that, why put it in that site when there's a bunch of problems at that site, until they clean up the problems at that site? Well, okay, whatever I say today, don't freak out, because it may not be a reason to freak out. But I just want to tell you what I know, okay? There is a guy, there is a person there who was mixing chemicals to your order. Totally legitimate, as far as we know. No permit, no... Nothing from Division of Fire Safety, nothing from ANR, nothing from anybody that we know. And what I found out today confirmed that no one knows that if they have a permit, but they're pretty sure that they don't. He died of really bad cancer, probably caused by the chemicals he was mixing.
Well, he's a chemist.
He is a chemist. It may have been caused by the chemicals mixing. The guy that works in the building's wife won't go to, that works in the building right next door, he's still going to clean it. His wife won't go there anymore, and won't let the kids go there anymore, because she's afraid that there's, that the chemicals are in the building. You can often smell him there, really badly. The, he has, doesn't appear to have any particular storage for big barrels of ethyl acetate, whatever that is, and other chemicals that are in there. The guys that are mixing the chemicals go in and out of where they're mixing them to outside into their cars and go to lunch and everything, burying their Tyvek. So they don't separate their workspace from their eating and living space. There's a whole bunch of things like that. So the other tenant is who does those tubes that you can filter water through, what are those, the nanotubes, he does nanotubes. And his production is almost all water, water-based. He doesn't use much chemical, if any, at all. And so he called Division of Fire Safety, and they called the Hazmat team. And the Hazmat team apparently came out, Richard went out both on Friday, and then he went out on Saturday also, and met with them, and he was a little bit alarmed. The guy from Hazmat said he could close it, the building, close to business. And, but he did not. I talked to Bruce Martin, who was the head of Division of Fire Safety, the Springfield office, who told me to also, and I talked to Robin Stern, who happened to call in the midst of all this, before I got a chance to call her, and we talked about it. She said, tell everybody, so that's what I did. I called VOSHA, I talked, I did not get a response from them, but I left a long message at the Office of Montpelier. I called, I mean, I wrote an email to Todd, I'm going to forget his name, no. Todd, who is tier two.
Water.
Yeah, I saw that name. And he, and he hasn't written back to me yet. He...
Cosgrove or something like that.
They don't, I got it right here, they don't have any... No one has anything, Rich has never received anything on tier two from them, though other, he's got from tier two. Tier two is, if you have chemicals of a certain volume in your business, you have to report them.
The Cosgrove State.
Cosgrove, yeah, Todd Cosgrove. But he hasn't gotten back to me either. But I informed all of them as I talked to them, that Bruce was going to inspect the building, and he may do it tomorrow, may inspect the building tomorrow. I'm still concerned about it, and I would prefer this is just me, that the fire department closes it. And then keep it closed until they get their permits. They don't have any permits. Or verify that they have a permit from VOSHA, from, well, that VOSHA has cleared them, and they have a permit from Division of Fire Safety. That's what I prefer. I don't know that it's really anything bad. I do know that Richard told me that if there was a fire in that building, he would evacuate Cambridge, Gordon, and stand back and watch. Because he can't fight any of the things in that building. He called the state and just stand back and watch. They've got big barrels, this big of whatever ethyl acetate is.
What is he using the chemicals for?
They mix chemicals. You call them up, and I say, I want this mixture of chemicals. They say, okay, and they make some, and sell them to you.
Really? Who's the they? What company?
It's called Matrix Chem.
But it's not the marble business, or the...
Not the marble business, it's not the nanotube business.
It's a separate new, apparently new business?
No, he's been there for a long time.
Isn't there some readings that are out there already done with the air quality?
The phase two, the phase two that I have, and I can, I stand it, I can send it all to you. The air quality in the building is way off the charts. And Mike Foley, who was the tenant in the next building, told me that when they took those air readings, it was long after they had finished the... They kind of come there month at a time. They, one month they do the mixing, and then they're not there for a month, and then they do mixing. It had been a long time between mixings when there was, when that phase two before it was done. And why the state has done nothing about it, I have no idea. I talked to ANR, I'm pretty sure I talked to Division, not, no, I know I talked to Division of Fire Safety. I told them what was in there. They said, well, can you tell us exactly what's in there? I said, no, I just know the guy's mixing chemicals. I don't have any authority to go in there. Should have said Rich, but I didn't. This was a year and a half ago. And I told, I told Agency of National Research, they don't have a permit for anything down there. Why are you letting me even operate? And they said they didn't want to be bothered, basically. And they're doing all these reports on the building for the purpose of the solar field, so they were doing the environmental studies, and finally they did a phase two. Why, this phase two was done, why wasn't that phase two made public? I just got it. It was done November twenty, 2018, was finished.
And then there's an evacuation process out into the open air that's done once a month.
Yeah, their evacuation process is just outside. There's no filtering, there's no... And, by the way, I called the school and said, you guys transfer students there. I don't want you to panic. I don't know what you should do or not do. But if you can't use another parking space, then I'd be, stay far away from that building as you possibly can.
Twice a day, four buses park there, and they transfer students from bus to bus. And students actually stand outside.
Now, if someone from the state is watching this, and you say we're panicking, then tell us why we shouldn't. Go investigate and tell us why we shouldn't panic. Because we've been after you for a year and a half to do something at that site, and you have done nothing.
I find it, I find it almost incomprehensible that this is, they don't have the proper filtration or fans. I mean, I have a pesticides license, and when we mix chemicals, you have to be prepared with the Tyvek suits, and you're not supposed to take that suit or whatever, and go into your car, or that's supposed to be separately, so you don't contaminate. I mean, and I know that, I have a friend who was in the auto body, when you have these auto body shops, they have filters so that there's fumes, don't go in the, I mean, this to me is ridiculous. I don't even know how he gets away with it personally. I would think so.
I mean, I have no idea. I think, well, he said they were mixing. Wait, he, let me believe, there were two men in Tyvek suits that were mixing the other day. And the guy who died was the chemist. The lady who owns it, according to Mike Foley, is a realtor. She has no idea. And the guys that are working for him, that he doesn't, he thinks they're just technicians. They're not. They don't have any special training. I mean, they might have training in mixing chemicals, but they're not chemists.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it sounds like a disaster waiting to happen, and I hope it isn't a disaster waiting to happen. But somebody needs, with authority, needs to go down there and check. And Bruce Martin said he'll check possibly as early as tomorrow, but it'll be definitely this week. Now, his check is just whether or not they're doing it correctly for Division of Fire Safety. But he, but I also heard that he had talked to VOSHA. And I talked to VOSHA, and I told VOSHA to contact Bruce, and I gave them his phone number. And I did the same thing when I talked to Todd Cosgrove, made sure, said, you need to talk to Bruce, because Bruce is telling me, he asked you if they had tier two. And my fire chief doesn't have tier two information, so they probably have not done tier two, which means they're probably doing everything wrong.
But there are regulations, I mean... I don't have my orchard up and running, but in prior years, when I had it, we stored chemicals. I had to give a list of the chemicals to the fire department. In the event that there was a fire, they knew what happened, so that's the law.
When I say tier two, that's what has to be reported every year by your company, and it's kept at the state. And when I was working for the Southern Winter County Regional Blind Commission, I made sure all the tier twos got in. So yeah, I know what you're, I know, that's the tier two.
Yeah. I mean, that's just a little, a little guy spraying apple tree or peach trees or whatever. Can you, I mean, if you ever had a fire, I mean, we have read articles where chemical plants in the town, evacuated the town and all that stuff.
Something acid, it's ethyl acetate. That's the one that, in that report, there's like seven of that.
So what can we, what can we do as selectmen? Can we send a letter to the state? I mean...
Just back me up when I talk to him.
Well, that's not a problem, but is there something more we can do?
Not right now. Let's see what Bruce does.
Can the town health officer have a role in this?
I mean...
The town health officer?
Well, he is the town health, I mean, Rich.
And Rich is involved in all this, and he has...
That's right, okay. And what about if...
And the state health department's involved too.
If it closes down, if, I think that was the recommendation I heard you make, Bill, that it should be...
I don't want to close the building down for the sake of the other tenants, but if that's the only way to get them to get to comply, yeah, close it.
That was my question, so it would be closed down for the other tenants, and also... And then they would lose their source of income and their business as a result during the closing.
That wasn't the intent of this, this guy, who came forward.
How many other businesses are in there besides...
Two. There's at least, there's at least Mike Foley and Paul, Paul Lewis, the stone job. And this guy, plus the storage of cars in the back.
Yeah. It's thousands of dollars of cars in there, antique cars.
And others.
Right, Joe?
Okay, so the question is, what do we, what do we do now? It is now quarter two. Do we stay here waiting for two people to show, or do we cancel?
They said they'd be here, and I want to go home. No, I'm just kidding. They said they'd be here. I wouldn't wait any longer. Jack said six thirty at the...
Right, and it's now almost quarter two.
The other guy was going to be here at six. However, if you, however, we should consider whether, this is your last meeting to consider the Southeast Vermont development, and Southeastern Vermont development, and whether or not you want to put it on an article in the town plan for the voters to decide whether or not to grant them what they're asking, which is two thousand...
So why don't we discuss this, even though there's no representative here, and maybe we can deal with it?
Can we finish the discussion, unified?
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were done.
Well, so if Bruce Martell is supposed to be going to do an inspection, if he's supposed to tomorrow or the next day, if he is to find fire and safety things, he has the authorization and the power to shut things down until they're corrupted. Is it too much to assume that if he was to find violations that raise red flags to him, even though they're not maybe fire and safety, but they're environmental, that he would share that with other state agencies? I mean, the fact that he goes there, it seems like that should trigger or start some kind of action rolling. He works really closely with state Hazmat team. He works closely with VOSHA, though they don't have the same authority. And Todd Cosgrove is on the, I think he's a part of Haz, he's on, I know he works with Hazmat materials, but he's the tier two, I think, program director. I, he is going to give us a report of whatever happens, and it's a public report, he'll share that with us. I don't think it's too much to expect that he's going to tell the other state agencies that they need to look into it. Yes, I think because otherwise, if he doesn't have the authority to do something, but it needs to be done, and he doesn't do it, then that liability is on him, probably personally. So I doubt that he'll not act. My question is, are we comfortable just with the idea that Bruce is going there, and it's going to get taken care of? Or do we, as a select board, feel an obligation that we should find out what Bruce finds out, rather than wait two weeks or three weeks? As soon as we find out what Bruce finds out, is it possible some action should be taken by us?
Well, why don't we, why don't we see what the agencies do first, and give them a timeline? In other words, two or three days. If nothing happens in two or three days, then maybe we need to have a special town, special select board meeting and then do something, and I'm not sure what, but take further action. Because I think there is a responsibility that we have for the town. And I agree with you.
So what I would like to see is that we set something in place that you keep, you stay in contact with Bruce, and as soon as you get some report or feedback from Bruce, you share that with the rest of the select board. And depending on what it is, we?
Well, why don't we do it on Friday? If nothing happens on Friday, then we can have a, maybe, or Thursday, whenever you want. And then we can have a special meeting and react.
Well, we could wait till Friday, but if he finds out tomorrow, he could tell us tomorrow.
We could almost have a special meeting.
I, I think we should keep track of this.
Oh, I agree.
And not, not just kick it off to the side.
Is there anything on the ordinary that they couldn't, a software member can't attend?
Yeah.
A site?
I asked him, I asked him if, if I could, to go along, and he said, he has three people. I think he's taken Volsha and other people with him. But it, but, let me answer this question first. So he, he suggested it would, he already has three people. And he doesn't want more people on the visit, on the site visit. So he doesn't want to overwhelm the person there. Well, it may, it may.
Yeah, I'm feeling real sorry for this guy right now. Nice to the guy.
Well, there may be more to it than just overwhelming the guy. You know, who knows? He may put the people in some kind of hazardous suit or something before they go in the building. And so there may be other reasons he wants to maintain just three people. But the other thing is, I'm not stopping with Volsha until I talk to them. I mean, I'm not just talking to Bruce Martin of Division, but I say, I'm not done until I talk to Volsha. And I want to talk to them. You know, I'm kind of not happy with the message I left for them. If this is their, you know, you look at their website and, oh my gosh, if you, if somebody drops a penny on the floor and no one picks it up, and if somebody trips over it, you know, they want to be there on the site the next minute. That's what their, their website says. But here I call them, and I called them at twelve thirty-five, and I haven't heard from them since. Well, I, I think what I would suggest is that you talk to Bruce and ask Bruce for a name of somebody at Volsha. Not just a blank call, but a specific person, like that he recommends you talk to, that he knows you'll get some action. I can try that, but he just told me to call them off. He said, just go to the website and report it. I will, I'll handle, I'll handle it tomorrow, but I will talk to Volsha and, and, and I'll make sure. And Bruce promised me to give it back to me, and I had his super secret cell number, which is his public cell number.
So have you notified the school about the safety, potential safety issue with the kids?
Yes. Mary, and, Mary Beth is handling that without a panic. Just going to talk to the bus drivers and tell them what appears to be going on and that they should, if they can't go somewhere else, just avoid the building. I don't know what else they could do.
And what's the status of the solar? Have they done anything with the solar?
They keep, I'll get a PUC hearing, I have no idea.
Could you talk to the, the school board member at least? One of our drafted ones when the time comes? I know he's missed the whole thing, but.
Yeah, I'll talk to him.
I think the school board should probably not, not just the.
Jack, don't go away till it's out.
Are you satisfied now? Can we move on?
Yeah, I just, I just think we need to keep track. Believe me, I believe me, yeah.
All right, Jack, since you're now here, so?
Yes, thank you for, for waiting. You are at my fourth meeting tonight, so it's kind of one of those.
If you want, if there's a chair here or what you want to do from there?
Oh, chairs, why not? Easier. Just a quick, wanted to do two things. One is to give you all a quick update as to what's going on with, with the Unified School District. And two, to ask the select board to put an item on the town meeting agenda. Just to kind of quickly walk you through what I've been, my world's been for the last little while. The, the various, as you know, evolve. We have, we're still fighting the consolidation, whether or not it's before the Supreme Court. We've been given, instead of the usual twenty minutes, we've been given an hour to argue our side. We'd like to think that means something good, but you never know. But there's a couple of problems with that, and that is that it's December, and the town meeting is in March. And the, the likelihood of getting resolution in timely manner for this is not fantastic. So what we may be forced, what we are looking at is the likelihood that we won't have material to present to the voters of the three towns by March. This is not just on account of this, but it's also the fact that the, that the state asked for foolish volunteers a year or so ago to use a new financial management tool called eFinance, which did not work. And, I mean, catastrophically, it did not work. Some of you may have heard that I was literally at, at the SU office Fri- last, Friday night, signing checks at eight o'clock in the, manually signing checks at eight o'clock in the evening. And this is not the first time. So we are only now, the various districts, looking at budgetary material. I still have not seen complete budgetary stuff. We normally have this done at the end of October. So there probably will be sacrificial lamb in terms of the order in which these get done. Given that the involuntarily Unified District is a district of multiple towns anyway, and it's not something that we do, we will be able to do at town meeting anyway, that this may be the one that goes last in the queue, which says that we're probably having a, a district-wide meeting, much as the one we had earlier, but probably will be in April, not in March. Wanted people to know that right up front. It's not exactly the best news in the world, but that is, I, I don't see how we can make that work better than that right now. That's what we're looking at. In the interim, we will, we, we will, in that April meeting, look to having a new Articles of Agreement that we get to build, and that you're invited to help us with. And that's the next step in this, is that what we want to do is we want to create advisory committees at the town hall. This is something that Ed Bank had talked about in the original Unified District Proposal pack a while ago. What we'd like to do is delineate some specific tasks, and we want to give it a trial run. So what we'd like the select board to do is to warn on the March meeting, creating an advisory board of three to five members, you know, whatever y'all want to do, depending, we think we can get five volunteers or just three, to act as advisors to the Unified Board if it continues after the Supreme Court's done. And to be there to advise them on matters of budget and of the facility and any other tasks that the Unified Board may ask them to do. When we come to the, the district meeting, but I think it'll be April, I'm hoping it's April. What we will, what we are looking to do is institutionalize that at the district level and have these become, become entities of the, of the new district. This is as close as I can get to creating essentially boards within the board, if you will, and have them take a first, have them have the first pass at, at budget, have them have, have first pass at facilities, the things that we can legally get away with them doing and not file, file to the, to the A O E. In our discussions with the A O E, they understand that Grafton in particular has standing to have such a board because they own the building. Congratulations, good move on that part. But that's what I wanted to, to let you know and to ask if we could put this on, on the, on the warning, and if you want me to create specific language in terms of the, the, if you like, this idea, create some specific language around what the duties of this will be. It can't, it has to be advisory in purpose, but essentially what it is, it's a way for us to, to fully test out this model before we flip it all on you in April. I expect they'll have a couple of meetings, and then essentially the Advisory Board would become part of the district as, as part of our governance structure. So that's, I hope that's the idea.
All right, well, thanks. Jack?
Yeah.
Could you craft the wording?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
For the article as you think it should be?
Okay.
And then understand that probably would be you that would explain to the voters at the informational meeting before town meeting what, what, what this all means.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very much, you know, I, I, I know what the drill is going to be for this, because I'm going to be doing it in three different places. So, yeah.
I have a question, Jack. When you say the budget probably not until April, is that when you're presenting it to the public? Then what's the next step? Does it go elsewhere? Are we looking at delayed tax bills that?
No, this is one thing I don't want to ever have it happen again, is what happened to everybody the last time. The idea is that this would be done in April, the thirty days would make it May. Hopefully, everybody passes it, and that would be the only reason why there would be a cause for delay in tax bills. The, I, I have agonized over this, but the reality simply is that if I want to make sure that high school budget is ready for voters in March, I want to ensure the SU budget is ready. The only one where we don't have a mandated date to meet is the Unified District, because that is its own sovereign municipality and meets when it chooses to. I mean, we could have a meeting earlier, but we would, we just don't have the, I still have not seen a budget in the new software outlining what we spent this year, let alone forecasting for next.
So is it just the software problem? Is it the, the, those who, who manage the software, or are people not agreeing?
I'm, you're going to, you're asking me a question that would be very impolitic for me to answer. Do I have some opinions about this? I absolutely do. And if you want to talk to me outside of this meeting, I'd be happy to share the video. But let's just say that there were, there was been a, the consequence of this, it turned out, we found out that the bulk of what was being, what we saw was being done electronically, was being done manually, including most of the, most of the paychecks. And there was, and reconciliation, oh well. We are looking at the old legacy boards. They're supposed to go out of business on the thirty-first of this month, and they are supposed to approve audited books. Right now, there are no books to audit. They will be finished, but there will be the successor board, probably us, the Unified Board, that will end up doing it. That's where we are at. And I can't send you doc, you know, I can't send you the stuff that I should be able to send you. And I'm going to be writing a letter for the, for the town reports, outlining what I've got on, as of your report deadline. Hopefully, it'll be better than this right now, but right now, it's a little on the messy side.
So the Union High School, are we, are we, we're going to have a?
You, you, the, the Union High School will be done as it's always done.
Okay.
The, the S U stuff will be done as it's always done. The question was, if we have to put it in an order of what gets done, what doesn't get done, where do we have wiggle room? That's where we have wiggle room. If I can get it done before, if we can get it done before then, absolutely will. But right now, I want to be honest with people and not have them wonder what the heck's going on. Maybe wonder what the heck's going on for a different reason, but not for that reason. It's a mess, do you think? What's really tough about this is that, you know, I'm going to say a couple of things in support of the current administration at the, at the school system. They are the only reason that we aren't being directly run by a Dan French. They're by Dan French. They have been heroes in this process. But that combined with the software and ProGlio has been just that one, you know, extra straw on the camel's back. I think things will be much better this current year when people accountable for some of this mess is not working with us. They're, they probably won't be the last person, but that's, again, we won't talk about that. That's, we're, it's getting fixed. It's just not getting fixed quite as fast as I would like. Good news here is that we do have, we, the, the model of governance that we're trying to develop is something that other, let's just say unwilling boards are looking at as a model. We're trying to build something not just for us. Trying to build something that, that other involuntarily consolidated districts can use to bring towns back into the governance project across this state. Really have worked for all the holes in forty-six, I think we've found a few. And we have lawyer, we have lots of lawyers that have already vetted our proposal. And I'm feeling confident that we will not get challenged on this more decentralized governance model that we have in mind. So if there's any good news you pulled out of all this, it's actually not a bad piece of good news.
So we talked about the budget. What about the officers, I don't, the directors, school board directors? How, are they going to be on the ballot? Are they going to be on the table also?
We, much as we nominate people from, we used to nominate people from the floor, for, for town boards, we, this district will have that power to nominate from the floor. It's my anticipation that we will, and again, I can only speak for myself because we haven't provided to you all, we haven't voted on it, and you haven't agreed to it. But the, the model that we, that some of us are looking at, where it is called a reserved member style. With reserved member means that you have a vote of the entire district, but you have reserved members. Why this would work for us is as follows. It would effectively mean that there would be reserved members from Grafton, reserved members from Athens, there would always be representation on those boards. The reality is that most people in Westminster wouldn't be able to name twenty of us. And maybe three out of Athens on, on, on a good day. So if those members are, are nominated, and we're hoping that we maybe are going to give some nomination or some sort of vetting ability to those advisory boards, that people will generally follow those recommendations. And it would be a way of both complying with one man, one vote by having a, by having a district-wide vote, but being. one man, one vote by having a, by having a district-wide vote, but being reasonably sure that your representation would A, represent you and B, that you'd have some. Because in, in future years, when some of us are all, you know, when new people come on and aren't quite as notorious as some of us are, they'll be able to, they'll be able to take the recommendations of these boards. I'm also hoping that the advisory boards will effectively act as train wheels for people that want to, want a taste of what it's like to be on school board and without necessarily committing to, you know, 40 meetings a year.
So there are advisory board, so is there going to be school, rather than school directors?
They will, yeah, the school directors will still be elected by the, by the, by the school district and we'll probably give you the option of going Australia ballot versus being nominated from the floor. I will nominate from the floor this year because that's what our interim articles allow for and then after that, as you wish.
Okay, so then I not to expect anything in the ballots? Or no one?
Just like you don't expect anything from the high school ballot.
Right, okay.
It would be bad.
On the floor.
At least this one time. Just because, again, if we didn't do it this way, we'd have to have separate, we'd have to have a meeting of the district to approve the articles, we'd have to wait 30 days to get your new board in, then you'd have to wait another 30 days before you could vote on them and that's, that seems a little crazy to me. That's basically pushing it to May or worse.
Okay.
So, and I didn't say it was great, I just said it's somewhere I could figure out how to do it. Yes.
Jen, I'm just wondering how in this decentralized model of governance, isn't these boards within boards, which sounds like it would be very advantageous for Crafton and Athens, how are you possibly convincing Westminster who could outvote both of us together to do this?
To have convinced them it was their idea? Well, the, the reality is that any articles of agreement could be changed by the, by the members of that district in, in following years. But there is a great deal of understanding that the price of giving Westminster as much independence as possible is giving Athens and Crafton also as much independence as possible. And if we act in a way that is not, that is not congruent with, if Westminster folks get really riled up that, you know, Jack or Jess or whoever is in our seats isn't acting in their interest, I suspect they'll find somebody in Crafton and Mathons that agree with them and then vote for them instead of us. But I think it'll take, they'll have to be pretty annoyed and we'll try not to do that for at least a while.
Well, not the teachers' contracts, where state, where they fall in place, is it going to be okay time-wise with the budget?
It'd be, the teacher contracts run on a different schedule than the vote, on the votes of your boards. You know, we vote on these boards, I mean, vote on these budgets in March and we're taught, we have in them reserved money for future contracts and the teachers can read those too. And that always makes for very interesting teacher negotiations while you're, when they know how much money you've already got reserved for their pay increase. Just get out of those meetings at night. The, that won't be affected, bottom line, it, it's, it's fine. We, we are assuming the state recognizes that the transitional board is your board, both because the articles say they are and don't have an expiration date and because you're all kind enough to confirm us in our position until we get this thing wrapped up, trying desperately to do. And by the way, if, if people are interested in running for select board, please let me know, I mean, for, for school board, please let me know.
Jump it once, right?
Yeah, kind of that. So, anyway.
So you want a motion from us?
Yes.
To authorize you to write the, the article and put it into the town reports?
Yes, please.
So we're going to make that motion or?
Let's put a deadline on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is the deadline?
Yeah, thank you.
I was going to give you the deadlines and?
Just some time to sign.
January 16th is the last day for voters to file a petition for an article to appear on the ballot.
Okay, well, we'll have, have that through the power in the next 10 days.
And that's the last date for somebody to file, but then the select board still has to review and approve those articles and that still gives time for you to have them printed. So we would approve, we would approve after the 16th.
You can approve after the 16th.
What do you mean?
Or days prior to town meeting.
If he has a petitioned article, it's a petitioned article.
Well, I'm hoping to have you guys, I'm talking to you guys in the hope that I don't have to do a petition article, I get a lot of my G L O ready and hope, but if you approve this, then I don't have to go to the petition group, that's kind of why I'm here.
So on February 2nd is the last day to post our warning. So everything's got to be completed before?
Last meeting, last meeting before that is the 20th, if I'm not mistaken. It's March, it's Kinkar.
Your next meeting, you mean, Bill?
Yep, January 20th is my fourth.
Your next meeting is January 6th, am I hearing?
Hang on a second.
January 6th in the I C.
Let me make that the target date, in fact, let's make that the expectation. I don't want to hold you guys up, you ought to see what it is I wrote before, you know, get too horrified and, and that seems like the best protocol.
Okay, we have, we have, we have a select board meeting on the 20th of January, is that?
Correct.
Yeah, he's saying he'll have it by the 6th.
Let me, let me, let me, let me make a real hard effort to get it to by the 6th. I don't want to, you guys good enough on your plate without my stuff being added to it. Let's do that. I've already talked to our lawyer, our replacing, you made edits to the first pass we took at this and I want one more shot at it and we'll get it to you.
So you, what you need from us is just an authorization to put it on the warrant?
To put it on the warrant.
You'll do the, you'll do the actual writing.
I'll bring, I'll bring wording for you to approve at the next meeting and it'll be your, it'll be your item and it'll go up, that's what I'm looking for.
All right, so then we want to make that motion?
So we'll.
Okay. Do we have a second? I don't think we need any more discussion, do we? So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all for this and I, I recognize that I'm putting y'all through a lot and I.
It's okay, it's a very important, it's a very important thing in the town, quite frankly.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Well, just, just as a question, what happens if, if we win in court?
One of the reasons why this is, why there'd be some question about the wording that I want to tell the lawyers, whether we can turn this into the successive entity or not. The problem we had with a lot of this, we have people that are going to be going off of, off of the, these boards are supposed to be dissolved as of December 31st. Much of the rigmarole we've gone through here is to keep them as viable entities in terms of, of not being booted out in the court case. We, I had a discussion with the legal team last week, last Wednesday, and have been confirmed that the state has stipulated that they are not going to argue that we've been booted out because we've stayed in this fight all the way to oral arguments and that there's nothing that happens now that will, that will change that. So presumably, if they vote in our favor, the old boards will resume their duties. But that, where it might get a little interesting is if we have a, have a, when we have the vote of the, the whole district as a whole, we may take roll calls by town at that meeting to suffice us to continue on in terms of, of being able to call those separate, separate budgets. And we will do what we did last year, as you noticed, what I did is I essentially had a one-page summary of the individual town-level budgets and it's my expectation that that's what we're doing right now for this year so that I give you the ability to, to go back to an antebellum state affairs time comes. You know, we're dancing fairly fast.
You've done a masterful job.
Well, we.
Well, thank you, Jen. For your hard work and I hope you're successful one way or another.
Well, you know, we're certainly giving them, we're certainly making, one of the things that's come up is that the, the, one of the other towns is having a difficulty with us at school level issue, which we can't get into right now, but, and it may be something that, it's not, it's huge, it's my, I'm going to make it sound, but it's a, the feds need to get involved, but the state's made it very clear that they're not going to get involved simply because they'll ask, they'll ask the district to save Vermont from messing with this house. So we've, we've apparently have established a certain level of placiness, if nothing else. Anyway, let me get, let me step away and let you all get back to your work. Thanks, Jen. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Okay, we have the representative here for S E V D S, so do you like to give your spiel here?
Sure, thank you for.
If you'd like to come up here, you're certainly welcome.
Do you have a line?
Hi there, my name is Adam Arnold, I'm the executive director of the Ratterboro Development Credit Corporation. Saw many of you probably about six, seven weeks ago and here tonight to talk about our request for funding under sevens, which is our affiliate entity, Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies. So I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to give the, give sort of the overview of our program again, if that's the, your interest tonight.
Well, I don't know if that's necessary, I think we probably want to know why we should give you the money.
Sure. So as a regional organization, we, we are working with municipalities across the region and what we have found is that most of the towns that we work with realize that in order to accomplish the, the goals that they have, so what we just heard about, some of the schoolwork, they really need to work with the, with their neighboring communities, that no one town is able to do all of this by themselves and that they need to band together. So last time we were here, we shared a bunch of the commuter information, so what we know is that people who live in one town work in another town. We know that when the students grow up in one community, go to one school, they will work in a different town. And it's really trying to, a bulk of the focus that the funds that we're asking for across Wyndham County go towards is for education, career alignment, and really trying to work on the workforce for tomorrow. And what we see in, in town after town is that parents, students, teachers, guidance counselors, principals, the entire system is not fully aware of the opportunities that exist today here in Wyndham Region and will exist in the near future. We're an aging state, we're an aging county and the opportunities are great. So as that bulk of folks are retiring, there's actually going to be a faster rate of opportunity here in Vermont for individuals to climb within organizations than if they go elsewhere. You know, as we, my colleague says, you can grow up to be an astronaut, you can grow up here to be an astronaut, but you won't work as an astronaut in Wyndham County. So it's understanding what are the opportunities that are here and it's ensuring that those students see those opportunities. So often what they'll see is, is a, they'll know of one employer, they'll think maybe if it's manufacturing that it's just like, you know, when their grandpa worked there, but it's nothing like that. It's, it's clean, it's, it's high-tech, it's safe, but you need to take four years of math, you can't stop at your second year of math, you have to keep going. But in that same building, there's H R opportunities, marketing opportunities, there's accounting opportunities, there's opportunities everywhere here and so many of our students don't find that opportunity until it's too late. So that's a bulk of our work in the, in the school system. Happy to talk about other things. We also do a lot of entrepreneurial work, working with startups, scaling companies. I was on the phone today with the foundation here and we do a lot of work behind the scenes. It's not something that we can always be out in front on and it does require just a long-term commitment to understanding that as a nonprofit, we're really looking to grow the, the foundation of the economy for the region. Happy to answer questions, I could want on mine.
How do you derive to the 2037?
Oh, sure, great question.
I'm the treasurer.
So when we first started this back in 2011, we were only asking the town of Ratterboro for funding and they, they said, no, we're, go out and find other communities to, to sponsor this work, it's not just Ratterboro. So we then established a per capita rate, so similar to the Wyndham Regional Commission, that's the base of how we ask for those funds, is per capita. So that's $3 per capita.
$2.
Three, $3.
$3?
Yes.
That's the total?
So I think that's, you have 600. This was based on a population of 679.
That was in 2010 census.
Correct, yeah.
My question is, if, if the select board votes to put this on the warrant, who's going to be there to sell this thing at town meeting?
Sure.
Because there's going to be questions.
Absolutely. And, and it's a busy day for us, as you can imagine. So we have a lot of folks who are young professionals in our group that live in the communities, so often it will be a representative from the young professional, could be a representative from our organization and depending where the articles fall, we have to really try to cover as many bases as we can. But we are always committed to having someone there to speak to the article.
Is it either up or down on that amount or is it possible to vote below or above?
It's the will of the body.
Yeah, the, the town could, could actually cut that or increase it at town meeting if they so desire.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, so it is flexible in terms of the amount, this is a recommended amount?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, this is a request. And so much of the, the real value of what we do here is educate, so it's even just meeting with you folks tonight, having people understand about the opportunities with this work. The dollars are important, really important, because we then take every dollar and we go leverage it to, to state and federal grants. So if, if we're getting $3 per capita here and we're getting 2,000, $2,037, we would, we would aim to turn that into $8 to $10,000 with federal and philanthropic investments matching that. So it's powerful leverage. But it's also really important just to be able to stand up at town meeting, talk about the work, make sure people understand the goals, understand the, the opportunities. Sometimes we'll, we'll get voted lower, but we've also had someone stand up and say, no, this isn't enough, they should be getting more for that work. Yeah.
And would you be bringing handouts out of it, if you have a table that?
Oh, absolutely. We, so we can write a letter for inclusion in the town report, this is pretty typical for most of the communities. And then we can provide handouts for every seat, sometimes it's per table, every community handles that differently.
Yeah, just apply up at the back on the table.
What's your percentage of commitment from other communities?
Yeah, another great question. So last year, we had 74% of Wyndham County residents supported this request through municipal funding.
And do you have private corporations funding?
We do, so, and that's, we're getting into that now, we're saying, look, you know, all these folks, all these communities are supporting it, this is for career awareness for the workforce. We now have successful programs running all four county high schools that we can point to. So now employers are starting to see that. You know, the schools are now calling us up and saying, can you do this, can you bring people there? So they see that value and now employees are saying, okay, we, we see this now, we'll start to contribute.
You working with River Valley at all?
No.
Can you?
We can, you know, we're not defined by our geographic borders. So we, we've taken students to New Hampshire for some career awareness programs, you know, across that river and we can go north. They have some great programs and Bellis Falls in particular seems to go, you know, both south and north for a lot of their services.
Yeah, that's just Crafton.
Right, yeah.
Someone want to make a motion?
We're making the motion to create an article to?
Yeah, just to create the article, you're not approving anything, you're just putting it on the warrant.
That article is already written there, so is this what you're approving? You want to? You want to mention that this is what you're going to prove, shell the voters.
So the motion should be that if, if you, if this is the article you're approving, then the motion should be to approve the article.
Prove the article is written.
As written.
And this came from, is that it, am I right?
We wrote that, and this is standard language.
So do we have a motion?
So move.
Second, more discussion? So let's call a question, all in favor of, of putting these, this language on the warrant? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
But you need to have somebody there.
Oh, who's that? Yeah, doesn't go well.
At the informational?
As he was speaking, I was also thinking, we need to set a date for our informational meeting?
Yes.
Because having him there for the annual meeting is good, but it would also be good to have, to be able to tell somebody our informational meeting, such and such a date, and that would also be helpful.
Can we just get?
Can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Sure.
Bill, put that on the agenda for the informational meeting for pre-town meeting, so we can pick it up.
But yeah, the actual turnout for town meeting is getting smaller and smaller, so we need to get the information out, not just at town meeting, but as much ahead of town meeting as we can.
Yeah, and if you, I mean, I would encourage you, if you want to, is to write an article in the Grafton News prior to that, of, of what you do, maybe that would help and whatever, so that is another option you have. Great.
That, that's published only once a month.
Yeah, usually this deadline is like the twenty-fourth of the month, or something like that, it's March.
Great. Get in, quick. All right. Excellent. And is that a pre-town meeting, is that a week usually pretty close?
It's two days, it's got to be, you know, ten days before town meeting.
Within the ten days, or?
Within the ten days.
Yeah, but town meeting would be the third.
Yeah.
So it'll be sometime the end of February.
Okay, great, yeah, we'd love to have that up to you.
And, and we can let you know, or you can call Bill once it gets, once it gets, you know, once we set the date.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your interest, thank you for the question.
Thank you for coming. Okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn, unless you have, unless there's?
I just wanted to, last day for candidates to file a petition for anybody that wants to run for offices for a lovely town is January twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Okay, and I have a list of everything that would be coming out of my office, petitions are ready to be picked up.
Okay, if, if nothing else, yes, go ahead, Alan.
Just a little update, if you remember, we had a discussion a while ago, and Danny and I went out and walked the Ledger Road with Peter Dergen, and we were going to use the Ledger Road for access for timber sale on Grafton Improvement Association land. Don't think it took too long before Peter Dergen realized there's a reason it's called Ledger Road. And what he thought was going to be little pockets of soil that he was going to get to use to remove around within the, right away, it wasn't soil, it was ledge. So he, he has, he has asked, we have a deposit, Grafton Improvement Association has a deposit for a large timber sale, that revenue of that timber sale is what runs Grafton Improvement Association, and it's what is used for the funding for scholarships and for students. The, the, we went back to the idea of, of using the Howland Mill Bridge for access off from the hill. We are having problems with getting the loggers or the truckers to feel comfortable crossing that bridge with what, what could be, although it was done before we rebuilt the bridge after Irene, or rebuilt one abutment, this is a big sale, it'd be out like probably a hundred tractor trailer, or a hundred log truck loads and pups off from Howland Mill Bridge. The, Peter Dergen's concerned with putting that much tra, weight and traffic on that bridge without getting an engineer, and he hired an engineer, without getting some statement that says the bridge could withstand that. It, it, we tried the access through the ski area and tried to rebuild the road to shortcut off Kitter Hill down to the Grafton Ponds. There's going to be a discussion, and I'm just bringing this up so you folks can think about it, but there is a clause in Vermont law that says a piece of property cannot be landlocked. What does that really mean? Does landlock mean driver pickup truck? Does landlock mean able to get access to a piece of property for logging and, and utilizing product that's on that land? So it's an issue for Grafton Improvement Association, they've got a big chunk of land, and they've got timber there, they've got a resource to utilize, but as currently as the town roads exist, we don't have a way to get it off the land. So I, I expect, I'm just giving you, the select board a heads up, because I'm sure somebody's going to be coming and asking you, what's the select board going to do about this?
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Third.
So everybody approved, adjourned, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.